Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the much anticipated evidently Monday, June 30th, St. Charles County Council Meeting. We are going to start off tonight with the invocation from Pastor Brad Harris of Bible Baptist Church here in St. Charles, who would like to invite all of you to church on Sunday since you're here. And I will be leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and remove your caps.
All right. Let's pray together, may we? Dear Lord, as we think of this week and what it represents as we celebrate our freedom, well, we thank you for freedom in your son. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in our country, in our state, in city, county. Lord, I pray that in all these things, meetings like these, that your blessing would be upon us, be upon those, and may your protection be upon those who fight to protect our freedom on a regular basis, domestic and worldwide. We thank you for those who serve to protect us here in our community. I pray you protect them as well as they're on the streets each and every day. But we ask you to bless this meeting. May your hand be upon all those here this evening to discuss these things. May we be neighborly, may we be kind one to another, and, Lord, may we just love the freedom that we enjoy and respect those around us. We ask you to bless this time in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a third key and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilwoman York.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
Here.
We're going to start off tonight with public comments. So the clock is right there in front of Mr. Swanson. You have three minutes in which to speak on a subject Mr. Swanson had requested. Normally, we do three for, three against on a topic. Many of you who are here have been through this drill before, but we agreed to expand it tonight, and I believe five, six. Six is what we came up with to speak on the TR Hughes Dyeroath subject, and then whatever else we're going to have from there. So, once you finish with, when the three minutes shows up, you'll hear the beep. I will thank you for speaking and invite you to have a seat so we can stay on time and move forward. Here's the one request I would have. When you have a whole bunch of people in the room, and I know most of you feel a certain way about a particular issue, please keep the decorum for the room. Don't clap, don't cheer, don't do all that. We respect where you are. Just respect all the speakers who are here. That's the only thing that I ask tonight. Deal? Awesome. Thank you. First speaker.
First speaker regarding Bill Number 5369, Josh Sikowski.
All right. Before starting my time with Councilman Elam's permission, it's come to my attention that a few members of this council have been contacted in disrespectful manners to date regarding their vote this evening. I'd like to personally apologize to any of you who have been reached out to in that manner. Respect is a prerequisite to the dialogue that we've been afforded this evening, and I'd like to request you not allow the actions of a loud minority to color your perspective of the overwhelming, hard-working, respectful majority behind me. To my neighbors, thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for remaining respectful regardless of what's said, regardless of the outcome. Could I respect, could I request that my time be restarted, please?
Can you pause? Restarted for...
I, I thought that I had requested that, that I'd be able to make that comment without it eating into my time.
I thought you requested 15 seconds. I'm sorry. She started you 15 seconds late.
Oh, apologies.
Because I, you said 15 seconds. Sorry.
Okay. I didn't realize that I was beating time for those 15.
Fair enough. Start him over.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
My mistake.
No, it's mine. I appreciate the, you working with me.
There you go.
Our very real, very personal concern about traffic fatalities on Highway 79 has seemed to date to be disregarded. We're told, per Tom Hughes, there have been no deaths on Highway 79, St. Charles County's blood alley. STL Today recently penned, quote, "Old Monroe," where everyone knows someone who died on Highway 79. On March 30th of this year, the Lincoln County Journal announced a, quote, "Highway 79 Safety Coalition," unquote, after five died at Highway 79 in C. There's many, many more that I won't mention, and despite communicating these concerns, I don't feel like they've been appropriately addressed. Our concerns about an overall shortage of public services and supporting infrastructure are disregarded. We are told, per this council, quote, "Development comes before resources, not the other way around," unquote. We've done that. St. Paul has endured over 20-plus years of TR Hughes-driven, high-density residential development, yet we remain short on resources. Our request that the applicant refile for zoning that is not high-density does not seem to warrant consideration. Instead, we're told, per the county executive's 310 presentation in this room, quote, "Most of our housing stock is three-bedroom homes, but 70% of our households don't have kids. We need more starter homes for young professionals," unquote. Tom Hughes does not build starter homes for young professionals. Since he'll probably get the last word, he'll probably stand up here and tell you that he does, but he doesn't. Our housing availability and affordability problems in this country are due to a national problem. Jerome Paul refuses to cut interest rates, and Tom Hughes can't change that by building half-million-dollar homes. We're told that property owners have a right to sell their property for as much as possible, and we agree with that. We're not trying to prevent Mr. McMenamy from selling his land. We're trying to prevent another high-density development. It's difficult for us to believe that Tom Hughes is the only potential buyer of this land in the entire state of Missouri. There seems to be a lot more concern with Mr. McMenamy's property value than for Mike and Mike's family and their property and their property value. Also, what happens to surrounding home values when builders cut prices to offload homes that cannot sell, which is a national problem at the moment? Surrounding home values plummet. So what about our home values? It seems like the interests of those behind me are being deprioritized in favor of those of Mr. Hughes and at our expense. Despite that, we're here tonight to humbly request courage from our counselors. The courage to stand with the people who depend on you to literally protect their families' lives in St. Charles County's blood alley, Highway 79. The people who will not be there to cheer you on once this meeting ends and the room empties. The courage to face down your peers in government and tell them that you stood for smart growth standards and the reasonable interest of your residents. We need you to defend us in this moment. We understand these decisions are not easy, and we appreciate your willingness to consider the interests of our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill 5369, Tom Hughes.
Yes, hi. My name is Tom Hughes. I'm the owner of Charlestown Crossing and TR Hughes Homes. That's, we're in favor of the rezoning tonight. We're the ones that put it before you. There's been a lot of misinformation going around. Bottom line is, this acreage is adjacent to five homes in existing Riverdale that's six, over 600 homes. The lots that we're proposing are larger than the lots that they adjoin. There's Highway 79 on the east, the owner's brother to the north, and our development Dyeroath to the south. There are sewer and water available. Duckett Creek, put enough sewers in this area to service this last and final development. I've read there's going to be unhinged development all throughout. There's only sewers available for the, for the remaining lots that we're proposing. There's water. St. Paul owns the water tower. County staff has recommended approval, which I can't believe, I'm sure they did their due diligence. Highway 79 backs up in rush hour, just like Highway 70 and Highway K and every other road in St. Charles County. If you drive it, it's not in rush hour, and I've done it plenty of times. It's not a crowded highway.
Please don't.
Yeah, thank you. So, so anyway, you know, and we've never asked for a rezoning that has made more sense than this one. It really hasn't. I mean, there's, there's five people that are adjacent, six people that are adjacent to what we're proposing, and I've only heard really from one of them being very outspoken. And I've tried to work with that gentleman to no avail. The other folks live in, on lots smaller than what we're proposing. And for me, it really comes down to Bernie McMenamy's right to sell his property for the highest and best use, which I believe that's what this is. I think there's, every, every development in St. Charles was at one time a farm field, and I don't blame the people that would rather back up to a farm field than another house. I'm the same way. But the fact is Bernie McMenamy has a right to sell his ground. The people that live in the area, in my opinion, do not have a right to prevent him from doing that. And I think the county's going to set a really bad precedent. If this is not approved, then you're telling everybody, all you have to do is get, get a lot of people together and intimidate the council and spread falsehoods and get this defeated. I think we're talking about an end to reasonable development in St. Charles County. So anyway, I would ask your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill 5369, Nicole Perkins.
Hi, I'm Nicole Perkins. I'm at 717 Lazy River Drive. I want to, I'm going to kind of shift a little bit. I've been up here a few different times. Because my lot is smaller than the lots that will be adjacent to mine, it doesn't mean that my opposition should not be heard just as loudly. So I would like to go ahead and state that. In addition to the one dwelling per gross acre requirement, the master plan that's in black and white sets firm requirements for redevelopment to be, for redevelopments to be designated and arranged in a manner that clusters development, providing open space, sensitive to environmental impacts, and respect neighborhood character. There are no clusters of homes in this proposed development that provide open space. It's one massive cluster with open space to one side. We've shared many environmental concerns. I'm not going to repeat all of those to you. However, we've since learned that there's additional stormwater impacts that have been experienced in Riverdale as a result of the builder's growth development. There's no compatibility with surrounding land, which is almost entirely agricultural or sits on one to five-acre lots. And let's be clear, Riverdale should not be used as comparison because everyone in this room is very well aware that it was the exception. It was intended to be the exception, and regardless of how anyone wants to state it, that was the intent. Mr. Lussi also had told me and acknowledged that any of the natural buffer between the, my home and the development would be the property of the new lot owners. This plan doesn't even respect its own neighborhood character to separate it enough from the existing neighborhood. Riverdale was built before the master plan, so if the county had intended for more Riverdale or bluff-style subdivisions, the plan wouldn't have adopted these requirements. But it did, and it's in black and white, like I said, to protect us from inappropriate development. At the end of the day, there is a way to help everyone with this. We know that the seller wants to sell his property. We know that the developer wants to build. We're not saying we don't want new neighbors. We want all of this to be heard, the same, I've got partners out here that are going to talk about their concerns as well. We want all of that and to help the future taxpayers as well, but also the existing taxpayers who are here right now. So we've gone through the remonstrance process, the planning and zoning, planning and zoning has denied this application, and we're asking you to vote in line with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill 5369, Mike Forstall.
Good evening. I'm Mike Forstall. I live at 2836 Dyeroath. This development surrounds my home like a horseshoe. Many of the points that I wanted to bring up and reiterate, we've gone over multiple times. Many of you have been nice enough to take my phone calls, listen to us, and I do appreciate that. I just want to point out the lack of consistency with the master plan. This particular development would allow nearly triple the density that the master plan calls for in the White Branch Planning District. The master plan should be clarity and predictability for future land use, and not following it creates this very scenario. So ordinance number 405 dot 077 states that rezoning shall be in accordance with the master plan. So shall be, and the way I read it, not as a lawyer, is not advisory, it's not a suggestion, it's a mandate. So if the county has made an ordinance that makes the master plan binding, I feel that we need to follow the master plan. And it clearly says, no more than one home per gross acre. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill 5369, Scott Dyer.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Dyer. First, I want to thank our councilmen, city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the community for the time and effort and attention you've given this matter. I'm here to, here tonight because I care deeply about the future of White Branch District and the safety and the well-being of the people who call it home. Safety must be our first priority, then followed by closely, infrastructure and development. With that being said, currently, the Grove subdivision is not complete, and its full impact on the area alone is 100% unknown. This new rezoning quest on adjacent property the applicant has submitted is icing on the top, and the county will have to deal with the regarding of Highway 79's hardships for years and years to come if not executed correctly. It's way too much, way too fast. Love thy neighbor. A hundred and eight homes surrounding three sides of a five-acre unincorporated homestead is a new definition of being neighborly to me. It's a terrible decision in the plan, if the plan remains the same for the Forstall family and all the property owners who have abided by the county's requirements over the many years. It will never be forgotten today if voted through with no change by the applicant, especially after being tabled for some time. The applicant's developments, the Grove and the Buffs, are charged two water bills instead of one because these developments are not in the city limits of St. Paul. Talk about affordable living for the life of the property. Does that seem reasonable for the future new St. Charles County residents you are all seeking? Think about that. The current landowner should be able to obtain the highest and best use for the land. This 38-acre farm has not been tested, which is the landowner's right if unwanted, but if the property were to be available, I feel there could be good potential interest with a better plan pending the terms and conditions that the landowner would require of a purchase. The community's stance is not to halt progress, but to make space for a better plan, one that truly serves the county, the city, our residents, and our future. Council, please vote no. Vote with the district of the White Branch community. Thank you.
5369, John Schulte.
Good evening. I'm John Schulte, lifelong St. Charles County resident. I lived in St., in the city of St. Paul for most of my life. For the past seven, I've been living north of St. Paul in the White Branch Planning District. I was on the Board of Alderman for the city of St. Paul during the development of Riverdale. I worked with Mr. Hughes during that process. And St. Paul really felt that having that subdivision was going to be a one-and-done thing. Prior to that, the city of O'Fallon tried to do an involuntary annexation of the Highway 79 right-of-way, and hundreds of St. Paul citizens went and stood at the polls in O'Fallon, convinced their voters to vote that involuntary resident, or involuntary annexation down so that the city couldn't surround us because city of O'Fallon was going to go around St. Paul, they were going to develop everything to our north. Our current zoning in the city of St. Paul allows one home per acre if you have sewer and water or a house on three acres with septic and a well. The city financed and purchased the water tower and supply system at Riverdale, drained the city coffers, trying to maintain control of that area. We thought we'd beat O'Fallon. We thought we had this under control, and then all of a sudden, the county started allowing development at a rate greater than one home per acre, which really kind of upset the city. I'm not in the city anymore. I can't speak for them. But Mr. Hughes was aware of that fact, that it's one home per acre in the city of St. Paul, when he purchased his water taps, when he developed that subdivision. I also served on the 2030 master plan for the county. I can assure everyone in this room that there was never any ambiguity about one home per acre density. It was per development, not for the entire district. It did not mean 7,600 homes were going in White Branch Planning District. I respectfully ask this council, and I know this is a tough thing, I've done it for, I did it for 17 years, please decline this request for rezoning and any others that are of greater density than one home per acre. This would satisfy the city of St. Paul's goals, would fit the intent of the master plan, and it would be acceptable to we neighbors of this area. Who are your residents? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
5369, Terry Bauer.
My name is Terry Bauer. I live at 3289 Dyeroath, and I, I've been a resident of St. Paul for 40 years now. And the facts have already been brought forward before me tonight, before us tonight. So I just wanted to say that my family adamantly opposes this development, the same as everyone behind me and hundreds of residents of St. Paul. One developer should not be able to have this much power over the will of the people of this county. So I'm asking you, please vote no.
Thank you.
So next subject.
Okay. Tony Shepherd, regarding the municipal court code.
Tony?
Tony Shepherd?
You didn't tuck the dog this time.
No.
That was pretty unique.
The dog gets three minutes, too, right? Equal time? I got droppable four on this. This is giblet. She's my pet guard dog, my ninja guard dog. Anyway, Tony Shepherd, this just came up right before we have a national holiday coming in, July 4th. I'm kind of happy about that. I'm kind of unhappy about it. Might be talking to you about it, see what we can do, sir. We've got a wonderful municipal court judge and your code enforcement. Now, Jim Veeth is the inspector down there. He's a pretty good guy. Your judge says that I need to take and cut down my flagpole. I don't know if you can see that. Can I bring it up there?
Yep, I can see it.
You're good? Got a 30-foot flagpole sitting in my front yard. Got a wonderful, if you'd recognize it, there's a red, white, and blue USA flag sitting on top of that. Well, the judge says that's a dead tree. You need to cut it down. I kind of said in back of my mind, bite me, but I'm there in court, and you don't really want to say that to the judge because you never know what he's going to do because he didn't see the point. So that's why I'm here. We're going to have a fuss. I'm not cutting down my USA flag. It ain't going to happen. It all started out, got rolled up, couple pieces item in the driveway. I'm right on, I'm 500 Highway P, so I'm visible right there on the highway, right next to Dames Park. And yeah, traffic out there sucks. Excuse me. I'm not really super fluent. It's, it's terrible. But Jim Veeth wrote me up, dead tree, flagpole, had a, some scrap metal, got it all back on the trailer, it's all cleaned up, you know, everything's doing good, but the judge says, well, you got to cut it down. Well, the problem I've got with your muni court system, you mail tickets. You mail out a fix-it ticket, as I call it, I don't know what you really call it, mail out a fix-it ticket. Okay, it's cheap, quick way to go. We've got two houses, one at 500 Highway P, and then we got our farm over on Many Road. Well, they didn't have, mail it to where it was. They decided to mail it to the farmhouse. I said, well, why did you do that? Well, the first time I was up in there, oh, it must have been a clerical error. So, well, we're going to have to set this for trial. Okay, here we go. How much revenue are you going to grab out of my pocket? Caught myself that time. How much revenue do you want? So we went for trial. Well, I asked him again. So, well, why did you not mail it to the address that it happened? Well, we took it off the assessor's paper. Well, it's kind of funny because the assessor's office has me at 500 Highway Two, Highway P Two, doesn't it? So why would you pick one over the other unless you just want to hide something over there? Well, I never got the notice until, got the notice, it says you got a couple weeks. That passed. We finally checked the mailbox, like, once a month over in there, we get a lot of junk. Finally got it, went to the hearing, and it's just progressed and went solidly downhill from there. What I told the judge, it's a flagpole. Says, nope. So we had flagpoles made out of wood back in 1840. Goes, well, this is 2025. You need to cut that down and upgrade. You guys want to donate anywhere 500 bucks up for a 30-foot flagpole? As the wife puts it, she loves that tree there. We live between two burial grounds with Indians. It's kept everything quiet there. We do have a kind of a haunted house. It's all peaceful. Needless to say, coming up for nine, eight seconds, July 4th is coming in here. We're going to have a fuss. I ain't cutting down my flag. If, I'll reach out to you if we can help you.
Tony, Tony.
Yes.
In support? Yes. Okay.
Michelle Woods, 5369.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michelle Woods. I've lived in St. Charles County my whole life, and I'm a housing advocate. Tonight, I'm here to do, to do just that. I'm here to advocate for the building of more homes for working-class residents and young professionals. I'm asking this council to do what the residents behind me are doing. They are fighting to preserve the fabric of their community, and what I submit to you is that you are elected to do the same. However, your community is all of St. Charles County. In city and county council meetings all throughout St. Charles County, good development projects that are priced for moderate to middle-income residents are being turned down over and over again, and that is changing the fabric of our community. are being turned down over and over again, and that is changing the fabric of our community. People who are born here, so I ask you to approve this development and preserve the fabric of our entire community for people who are born here and raised here, for young professionals getting a start in their careers, and for hard-working residents who want to stay in our community and not be priced out by million-dollar homes like those that would be built on this property without rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to general public comments. Gina Orr, regarding the convention center parking updates.
I don't really have anything nearly as pressing as the ladies and gentlemen that are behind me, but it has been a month since I came to you and we- you tabled the ordinance that was for the parking problem that we've had in our St. Charles Convention Center neighborhood. So, I know that this is not a question and answer, but I just kind of want to remind you that I haven't seen any- I haven't seen any change, or I haven't seen any signage, I haven't heard any updates or anything like that on what you may or may not be doing to follow up for the problem that we have brought to you. So, it's just kind of a reminder that don't forget the issues that we've had. So, I look forward to hearing more, or something from you all, hopefully soon and hopefully before the next major convention that we will- they'll definitely have at the St. Charles Convention Center. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Arnie Deanoff, regarding agenda items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, county public advocate. Want to first out by starting to the parks, to the county Parks Director, Ryan Graham. We just spent well over two million dollars between Parks Recreation, use sales taxes, general county revenue, and Port Authority money on a new boating dock that is under warranty on the Missouri River in Klondike Park off of Missouri Highway ninety-four, near the village of Augusta. Yet a concrete tile square is broken, caved in, setting up our county for liability if any person gets injured, twisted, or breaks their ankle. I've called Parks Recreation staff numerous times, and it still has not been addressed. Mr. Graham, Parks Recreation Director, please have the contractor, under warranty, fully fix and secure this concrete dock tile surface to make sure that we don't have a lawsuit. The county engineer and Highway Road Commissioner, John Lyons. My favorite road in our county and one of the greatest roads of our nation, Callaway Fork Road, has several fords for crossing several segments of the Callaway Ford Creek, located in Boone Township, are deteriorating at a rapid pace, falling apart and could cause damage to tires when crossing the ford with an exposed pipe culvert currently. Could you kindly, Mr. Lyons, have your great staff look into these ford crossings, make all necessary repairs to prohibit any claims for motors having damages? Purchasing materials, supplies? Let's start to rely and try to support our county economy and the businesses and distributors that give back to our communities and employ our neighbors and friends rather than supporting other economies and out-of-state business interests. Buying two medium single cab flatbed trucks for two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars from St. Louis City is just ridiculous when we have two Ford dealerships here in our county. The Daniel Boone House roof replacement in the amount of one million, four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars is ridiculous. Bill number fifty-three ninety-three, sixteen million dollars in bonds for the purchase of new public safety radios that we just replaced seven years ago. We need to wait for the interest rates to be affordable and fiscally responsible. Why is Bob Schnur still getting an hourly consultant rate of seventy-eight dollars per hour plus all expenses when he is receiving over one-hundred thousand dollars annually from the county logger's pension fund for the rest of his life? And finally, when it comes down to amended substitute bill fifty-three sixty-nine, rezoning of thirty-eight acres across from the City of St. Paul. Go to the testimony from the County of Planning and Zoning Commission, where the votes were resounding, fifty-five opposed, zero in support. For the letters, one was in support for the speaker, thirteen opposed, and the vote was one for approval of the commissioner's, six denial. Interpret the White Branch Planning District in a meaningful and responsible way. Be good neighbors versus corporate profits, just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff.
Stephen Fuller.
It's warm in here, I get it. Steve, you brought a whole bunch of fresh air in with you, that was nice.
My name is Stephen Fuller, I live on Willis Drive out in St. Charles County, and I'm having a problem with a neighbor that's plans on putting forty-three units on a five-acre homestead, and I have a flood control problem because they built and building storm drains across the property and stuff. And I went to the Department of, yeah, they're supposed to do water studies and stuff. This girl's name is Heather, Heather B., she came out, and the present property owners said that this drainpipe that they're putting on my property, I've got a picture of it here.
Just put it right there. There you go.
Lift that mic up a little bit, too.
See, and this is from April.
Lift that mic up a little bit.
There you go.
This is from April sixth, before McBride got in there and started developing the property. This is a drainpipe that's coming off a country creek subdivision, and that's a five-acre subdivision. And with one inch of rainfall, we're looking at five-hundred-thousand gallons of water coming out of this drainpipe. Now, they told the department that the- this pipe existed all the way across this property right here, yeah, right here, which it did not. But McBride told that department that it did. And here's pictures of what they considered the old drainpipe that they removed. This drainpipe came from over here by this guy's shed, and there's not enough sections covered, five-hundred feet of field dirt. This is what they installed there, and here's the actual subdivision that they're trying to push this water onto a drainfield down here, but the drainfield is only about three feet deep. Is there more or less just for cosmetic reasons? I figured so they could get their forty-three houses in here. Now, what I'm having a problem with here is a little bit of mud flow coming off of that. They put this fence down, they put hay bales down, trying to slow the mud problem. All this has been washed out with a half-inch rainfall that we had last month. And it's starting to cut into my property. I tried slowing it down by stacking up rocks across it, and it, muds pack up behind these dams, and I had steps down on the property. But when they installed this other pipe.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Okay.
We're going to have someone from staff get with you.
Okay.
Joe was asking, where is- where is your property located?
Two oh-one Willis Drive, out in front of Fairmont School. On Hayley Road, before it turns into Spencer Creek.
Right.
Glad to see you. Okay, I get out of here. Well.
No, the subdivision is in St. Peters. So, they built the subdivision in St. Peters, and the water's coming into.
That was the final speaker.
All right, final speaker. So, that's going to wrap up public comment for its night. In the interest of time, and because there's a lot of you here, and the room's getting warm, I'm sure for all of you, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to take bill fifty-three sixty-nine off the table.
How about if we do this? How about if you make a motion to amend the current agenda and move that bill up?
We make a motion to amend the current agenda and move that, this bill up next, fifty-three sixty-nine.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, I would entertain that motion to take it off the table.
Motion?
Agreed.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. With that, I believe we'll kick it off with Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I think we've heard all about it earlier. I gave each of you guys a handout with regards to the three months of what has been happening since this was tabled. You guys can read the highlighted sections of it. I think what is well-known, what was presented earlier, this was denied by Planning and Zoning, it was brought back to us, they were able to get the signatures all notarized to make sure we have to go to a supermajority. Three months have passed, there's been no change. One of the things I do want to bring forth is the last part of my handout I gave you. Historically, as council members, we really talk about, we represent our districts. We know what's happening more in our districts than the rest of us, and we've always gone through that. I pulled up every single voting record we've had since I took over in January of 2023. We have agreed sixty-seven percent of the time with the member from that district. And all I'm asking for you tonight is to vote no on this project, and let's have something better be brought back. We did it with Tall Trees, we got a better project. So, I'm not going to labor on forever because I think you guys have heard all the information. I personally have called all of you, and I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Brazel?
I'll be brief as well. The primary, the primary responsibility and obligation of an elected official is to do what the people and that they're elected to do, to follow what their wishes are. It's not necessarily what their opinion is. And by overwhelming support of smart growth beliefs, people in St. Charles County are over the top with the growth, the explosion, the road, the traffic's horrible, schools are full, and it's not what people moved out here for, and even for the folks who've lived out here a long time. And I'm one of them, I've lived here thirty years, coming from North County. I left North County because I don't like the way it is, I don't, I didn't want to be that, in that environment. And just like all these folks, you guys, St. Paul is very similar to Fiance, they appreciate their rural characteristics. The master plan was violated years ago, and now a council member got unelected. And Matt's doing a good job to support what they want, and this county should be supporting what the people in the county want. Not one individual developer. I respect the developer doing what he thinks he can get away with because that's what a businessman does. I don't fault him for that. But I would fault the county council members for not listening to the people. I think that's a big problem. I'm not saying you guys are going to vote yes or no because I don't know, because I don't call and campaign for you guys and find out what your votes are going to be. But I would think the right thing to do is vote no for this because it's overwhelming support that this is a really bad plan. And the whole thing about affordable housing, I'm not so sure these are what you're going to be considered affordable housing, but the other thing is, is we've had an increase in apartments, two-hundred percent in the last two years, two-hundred percent. We haven't got caught up with those people filling those yet. And so, talk about infrastructure overload, it's insane. If we want affordable houses, put it closer up by seventy and by the major highways, but not in the middle of a rural community that expects, by the master plan, living in a rural characteristic area. That's what they bought into, that's what we provided to them. We can't change in the middle of the game and say, by the way, we're going to just let this guy get away with it. No! That's not what the master plan says, and that's what their intentions are, of building their house where they are and staying in the St. Paul community. So, you guys know, I'm a hundred percent no on this, so that's just where I'm at.
So, quick. So, quick point of order. Did we ever accept the substitute?
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we were voting on the right procedures. Anyone else to speak on this bill? Seeing none, I would ask you to please call the roll.
Substitute bill number five-three-six-nine. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to R-one-E, single-family residential district, per application, RZ twenty-five dash zero-one.
Go through the map.
We've, yeah, pardon? We've already had discussions, so I'll read the bill again, or the title again, and call the roll. Substitute bill number five-three-six-nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to R-one-E, single-family residential district, per application, RZ twenty-five dash zero-one. Councilman Swanson?
No.
Councilman Brazel?
No.
Councilman Eland?
No.
You pass it.
Councilman Hammond?
No.
Councilman Hollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
So, with that, the bill fails? We will move on to our regular agenda, which gets us back to reports from the county executive.
Chairman Eland, do we want to take just a minute to allow people to leave?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Please, do we need to make a motion for that?
No.
Okay.
Here you go. All right. Now that we can hear again, that'll move us on to oral report from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have anything to report, and I don't know if the lady is still here that asked about the parking issue, but this.
But just, just remind everybody that that's not, she called it an ordinance.
Right.
It's not an ordinance. It's a consent agenda item, which you can vote up or vote down. If you voted, if you voted up, you could come back with an ordinance later on and do something different, or you can just vote it down. But, you know, it's, it's not an ordinance, and if somebody wants to do something different, they probably should put an ordinance in, get, get started on it.
But I would point out that the count, the agenda item that we had last time, where we talked about that, we did approve.
Oh, you did? Oh, so it's, so you approved the, I'm sorry, I was not, I was not at the meeting.
Correct. We did approve it. I understand.
Okay.
So, yeah, we did approve it at the last meeting, but they were looking for something else on some other roads. So we approved because the highway department had already put those signs up on the roads that it was a safety concern, not a parking concern as much. So now we were going back and hopefully looking for a recommendation. I don't know if anybody talked to you about that, John, but there you go. So welcome to, thanks for coming to the meeting where you can learn things. So.
Well, then, but that's still, I guess, my point. If, you know, we can, we can propose, and you can accept, or you can just start the process and do whatever you want, and then ask me to sign it later, but.
Yeah. There's a follow-up. There is no amending a consent agenda.
Right.
Correct.
Because I agreed to it before we even ever sent it out.
We're with you.
Okay.
Awesome. So no other report? We're good?
I'm good.
With that, that would get us to the aforementioned consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda tonight?
I got some.
Mr. Brazel, what do you want to remove?
The high-end rubber tire tractor, the two thousand twenty-five maintenance renewal, the rolling stage.
Do we go to the table one now or what?
So tell me which all you're, you're going to table first, and then we can go from there.
Correct.
So you're changing highway?
No, just pull, yeah, the, the rubber tire tractor.
So, okay, got it?
The maintenance renewal for eighty-one thousand and the rolling stage.
Hang on, where's maintenance?
Information Systems.
Information Systems, okay. So you got a highway, you got an information systems.
And a rolling stage for a hundred forty thousand.
Family Arena, last one.
Uh, thank you. All right. Done. Any other items to be removed? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, objection, we'll move forward. Mr. Brazel, we'll start with your first one, which is the rubber tire high lift loader.
I, I just, John, I guess this is you, this one, the other, all the three I pulled off only have one bid from what I see.
Yeah, so the, the rubber tire high lift, we actually are purchasing off of a Sourcewell quote, which has other.
Sourcewell, okay, so it's a co-op.
So it's a co-op.
Okay, well, then you can't answer the, are the other ones, is rolling stage a co-op? You don't know, anybody? Who's that?
Parks.
Parks?
Do you have any more questions?
No, no, I, I, I understand that because that's bid in a co-op. I get that. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Bob, on the rolling stage, was that bid?
All right, hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One item at a time. So are you done with that?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation?
Recommendation to approve.
Recommend to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, you had had information systems first. Sorry.
Maintenance renewal, I'm just curious why there's only one bid.
You mean on the Adobe product?
Yeah, the eighty-one thousand.
Can you pull that mic closer to you, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
So the, the reason that there's only one bid is Adobe is a proprietary product. It's how you convert from like a.
PDFs.
PDF that may come to you to Word. It is fully integrated with Word. It is the proprietary product that we've had in place. And these, this is the annual maintenance fee for the two hundred and fifty-four licenses that we have in county government for the people who use that.
Is that normal?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I was just asking.
No, that's fine.
It's kind of like with, with Windows, either you're going to renew the Windows license or you're not.
All right, then a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, rolling stage, family arena.
Yes, this is a phased-in replacement of the existing rolling, or stage platforms that we have at the family arena. The platforms that we have now are original to the building. They're starting to break down. And the, this is, this is a sole source bid award that we're requesting here because the, 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 the stage platforms that we have, some of them are still good, and, and a lot of them are still good, but they're starting to break down. You can imagine over twenty-five years with all kinds of different performances. These platforms have, have seen better days, and they're starting to fail. So the, the rolling stage that the, the industry has kind of changed. Back in the day, nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-seven, this product was kind of a built-in place kind of architecture. You, you built it there. With the size of production of stages now for concerts and things like that, what these acts want to do is they want to, they want to build their backgrounds and all the lights that you see behind the stage and everything else that goes with it, and then the stage comes in behind it. And having the, the rolling feature on, on these platforms will allow us to, to build the stage a lot more efficiently than putting it together like an erector set in, in the midst of, of the production crews who are putting these acts together and getting them ready for the show. It, it allows us to do this in a much more efficient manner, which will save us a considerable amount of labor over the course of time, over and above what we're doing now. So this is kind of a phased-in approach where we are, we are going to have to part with some of our existing equipment. But we can't afford to have a void where we don't have enough stage platforms and the architecture below those platforms for the acts that we have to perform and have come perform now. So we're, we're phasing this in. It's a, it, it's a legacy kind of thing. The, the system that we have now, as I said, is original with the building. So this is just something that for a twenty-five-year-old building, this is what we, we need to do.
No, Bob, I understand you might need it, but why is there only one bid?
It's sole source, so it integrates with the, with the, the equipment that we have there now. Otherwise, we have to, we have to buy a, 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 a larger, bigger system. So we are, we are transitioning using the existing equipment that we have with, that will be compatible with the, the new equipment that we're bringing in.
Councilman, I would tell you that I challenged this as well to the, the family arena. I had a long discussion with them. And what I found out was is that the first thing they did when they decided to go for a rolling stage was to call a number of the production companies about what are the, because it also allows us to do faster turnarounds, to get more concerts and that type of thing in during concert season. And so they wanted to get one the production companies felt good about, and the first thing they were told by most production companies is you already have stage-ready components, and if you're going to be able to build out that core rolling stage with larger pieces, unless you're going to buy all new stairs, all new pieces, you've already made your decision, that other companies, they don't make compatible components. So they did some research to confirm that. They found that that was true, and that's why they proceeded to ask for a sole source.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. County Executive.
I was just going to say, I didn't realize that Joanne had asked all those questions when I, I'm the last one to sign it. I called Bob and.
Asked all the same questions?
I called Bob before I signed it too, and told me the same thing he just told you.
I do think it's going to save us an awful lot in labor when you start looking at, before the way we built these stages, you would have to build the stage. And then if you were going to move from an end-of-house to a mid-house, you'd have to break everything down and move it back over and rebuild the entire thing, and then break it back down and move it again. This, you can move it, and it's going to give us a lot more flexibility on things that we can do at the arena. More?
No, I was just going to say, you may disagree with this, but we do, we do try to really vet these things. Occasionally, something will slip through the cracks, and, and I apologize, but we, we did, we did discuss this extensively.
It's all good. So that will bring us to, we have an item that is, that was removed from the consent agenda for parks, the linen wood park storm damage roof repair. Are there any items, any action to be taken on that bill?
I'd say remove it from the agenda.
We have a motion to remove it from the table. Do I have a second?
Second, take it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would open that for discussion now.
Yeah, I've had conversations with staff on this one, and it, this does bother me a little bit, and I understand that they put a lot of time into it. They had a pre-bid, and one of the contractors showed up, and they didn't admit it because of the constraints of the timeframe. However, in public work, quite often, they don't, they don't award a bid in this kind of, to this magnitude with only one bid. They go out again and get another bid, go out again, get another bid, whatever it takes, they get two or three bids. And in this particular job, I, they have a general contractor, and what I understand, I called Ryan, he never called me back, by the way. It's Cedar Shake Shingles is all, what I understand, right? So I'll ask him when he comes up here.
Yes, Cedar Shake, Cedar Shake Shingles.
Right.
And that's a tongue twister.
A couple of questions.
Yep.
Is this going to be prevailing ways?
Yeah, it's a county project.
Is it going to be E-verified?
Usually all of our projects are.
Because I know who the companies are working on this thing, so that's why I asked that question. I don't understand why there's a general contractor involved in a shingle job at one point four million dollars, and the subcontractor doesn't have anybody, doesn't even have employees, he sums it all out. So then you're three tiers, and so this concerns me for that reason. It concerns me that there's only one bid that we got, and from what I understand, it was a lot higher, and it got renegotiated. My question was, what did they take off? What was a couple hundred thousand dollars more, and then they reduce it down to one point five, one point five in negotiations with the insurance company? Is that the way I understand it?
Yeah.
So what did they throw out?
So we advertised it for a month back in July into August of two thousand and twenty-four. We'd only get one bid. Seals is the general contractor. There's nothing that prevents a general contractor or anyone from submitting a bid and then getting a sub on projects. I, I talked with finance about that. So it, it's, it's not uncommon. We've had a good history with Seals on other projects. They restored the Hayes House and did the roof on all the, the Hayes House out there at Matson Hill Park. They've done a lot of restoration work here in the county courthouse. So when we got the one bid from Seals, we were, we had a, a good relationship with them. They'd done a lot of great work for us, so we were comfortable moving forward in that. So we did evaluate that. When we submitted the, the bid specs out, obviously, they submitted a, a bid. They came in at one point six million. Obviously, after a year of negotiating with our insurance company of going back and forth, basically, the insurance company said, well, even though they bid certain, you know, these are the bid specs, there were certain roofs that didn't have everything in those specs at the time of the storm damage. So the insurance company would only cover what was there present during the storm. So they went back and forth, and like I said, it took almost a year for them to finally come to an agreement on this with the idea that obviously was with any insurance company, if they find any additional work, they can go back to them and try to get the insurance to, to cover it. But, so that's where they arrived at that one point four number. So after a year of negotiating back and forth, that's why they reduced that price. As of April, obviously, I think eighty percent of the cedar shakes come from Canada, which of course, you know, right now, who knows what, with imports and stuff like that. But as of April of last year, or April of this year, Seals had indicated that despite any sort of tariff increases or whatever, they, as of right now, they can still honor the two thousand and twenty-four pricing. So, and it's thirty roofs.
What kind of water and ice shield are you putting on it? Is it perimeters and ridges, or what is it?
I am not a roofer. It is in the bid specs. I do know that. The, the bid specs were created by Central State Roofing. So I, I, I can't really get into the specifics of the roofing and stuff like that. That was done by our consultant that we sent out, so.
The thing is, Ryan, and I tell the staff a hundred times this, I know how bad you need these shingles, and I, I, I'm going to vote yes for it simply because I know that we don't want damage to those old facilities, and we want to get it done.
Every time it rains, we get water coming in.
But I would say this, that this is the last time I'm going to, I mean, I mean it. You guys always put us on the spot. You got to do a better job getting bidders. From what I understand is, I'm in the roofing industry, and I don't do residential, so I don't know a whole lot of residential contractors. But I do know that a lot of these guys didn't know about this bid. I don't know how you host this.
Yeah, I mean, we advertised through our normal processes through finance. It was sent directly out to six companies, which we had included in a previous project for cedar roof shingles out at the town park. And then it was also sent out to three categories in the finance department's construction, miscellaneous, and services. So it went out to over a thousand contacts. So I think if it comes down to a company not knowing about it, and they should probably get in contact with finance and get on those, those email lists so they can get those, or, you know, maybe somebody's retired, or maybe they were on the list and don't get it anymore. I don't know. But it got sent out to over eleven hundred contacts in those three categories in finance. Why we only got one bid, I, I couldn't tell you. Like you said, we had a couple people show up to the pre-bid meeting, and, you know, the one decided not to bid it. But, yeah, obviously, we'd like to get the roofs moving, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of work out there with all the storms.
There is.
Problems, hard to get.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate answering my questions. I just, yeah, I was just curious about a lot of these things.
Yeah.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Take it.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. That would bring us to bills for final passage, if I'm scoring correctly, right?
Yes.
Awesome. So we're at Bill fifty-three ninety-five.
Bill number five-three-nine-five, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District, per application, RZ twenty-five dash zero-four.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-nine-five, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District, per application, RZ twenty-five dash zero-four. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Eland?
Now we do it that way. Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bill fifty-three ninety-five passes. That brings us to fifty-three ninety-six.
Bill number five-three-nine-six, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR, Single Family Residential District, per application, RZ twenty-five dash zero-five.
Any questions or comments about this bill?
I'm just very glad to say this to the three eight-year-old members.
And no one showed up. Please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-nine-six, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from a agricultural district to RR, Single Family Residential District, per application, RZ twenty-five dash zero-five. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Eland?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Bill fifty-three ninety-six passes. That brings us to Bill fifty-three ninety-seven.
Bill number five-three-nine-seven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-five budget adopted in ordinance twenty-four dash one oh six, to add two full-time police officers for Darden Prairie Police Services pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement, and to modify the police department's current budget to transfer three positions from one bureau to another to reflect the department's current organizational structure.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to amend Bill fifty-three ninety-seven, replace with substitute Bill fifty-three ninety-seven. That includes funding sources.
Second that.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Substitute bill number five-three-nine-seven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-five budget adopted in ordinance twenty-four dash one oh six to add two full-time police officers for Darden Prairie Police Services pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement and to modify the police department's current budget to transfer three positions from one bureau to another to reflect the department's current organizational structure. Councilman Eland?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Eland?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Hammond?
You're still, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. That gets us to fifty-three ninety-eight.
Bill number five-three-nine-eight, an ordinance waiving certain fees for recycling and building permits for the New Melly Fire Protection District to assist the fire department with the construction of the New Melly Fire District Station Number Two to be located at thirty-seven nineteen Highway D.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-nine-eight, an ordinance waiving certain fees. Bill number five-three-nine-eight, an ordinance waiving certain fees for recycling and building permits for the New Melly Fire Protection District to assist the fire department with the construction of the New Melly Fire District Station Number Two to be located at three-seven-one-nine highway D. Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
No.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Bill fifty-three ninety-eight passes, there are no bills for introduction, uh, which brings us to tabled bills fifty-three sixty-nine, we have already taken up. Um, any action to be taken on fifty-three eighty-four with the campground?
No.
Seeing none, that moves us to bill fifty-three ninety-four, I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll read the bill first. Oh, sorry.
I need to have it motioned to be pulled off the table.
I make that motion?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Uh, the bill is on the table now, would you please read the bill?
Bill number five-three-nine-four, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale and delivery of special obligation bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five Emergency Communications Projects of St. Charles County, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
I would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Um, substitute bill.
Oh, yeah, substitute bill fifty-three ninety-four, sorry.
A motion to have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any discussion on the substitute? Seeing none? Oh, sorry?
Mr. Chairman, Bob can give you the latest on this, this is the one.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Summers on his way.
Huh? Oh, Mike's gonna do it, okay, good.
Let's give the new guy some face time.
I appreciate that. Uh, today sixteen million dollars of special obligation bonds were offered for sale to pay for the cost of the acquisition and installation of the communication equipment necessary for dispatching of fire protection, emergency, ambulance services and law enforcement agencies and any other emergency services throughout St. Charles County. Ten parties were interested and ten parties bid on the St. Charles County bonds today. Because of the market's interest in the county bonds, we received an eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-dollar premium on the highest bid from Fidelity Capital Markets, resulting in only fifteen million, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of special obligation bonds to actually be issued while receiving sixteen million, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand in bond proceeds. Hundred-and-sixteen of the bond premium proceeds will pay for all the bond issuance cost. Using the bond issuance approach also saved taxpayers an additional two-point-three-million dollars when compared to financial pro, financing programs offered through the vendors financing program. So that is what happened today in a Cliff Notes version.
Excellent.
Is there, do we wanna have a work session on this so we get all the details or, or do, I mean, I don't know a lot about what's going on with this and we did buy a bunch of radios not too long ago.
Council, you approved this purchase three meetings ago and this stuff has been purchased and signed for. This was the bond issuance that you, the council also approved, the authorization for the offer. So this is just now that the clothing happened today, this is just the final step in authorizing.
I got you. What's the interest rate?
Do you have a question?
No, no, I was gonna state, we've already gone through all this, this is more of a formality to wrap it up.
Gotcha, anything else to add?
Unless you have any questions for me this evening.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your time. Um, please call the roll.
Have we accepted the substitute?
We did accept the substitute and we had discussion.
Okay. Bill number five-three-nine-four, an ordinance authorizing and direct, substitute bill number five-three-nine-four. An ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale and delivery of special obligation bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five Emergency Communications Projects of St. Charles County, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith. Councilman Swanson?
Yes ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Uh, bill fifty-three ninety-four passes and nice job, um, with, um, getting the extra, what'd you say, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six? Thousand-dollar premium?
Eight fifty-eight.
Eight fifty-eight, but who's counting, right? So that was nice. Um, with that, it brings us to announcements and miscellaneous, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I just wanna express my deep sorrow for the, the family and friends of the young girl that tragically died on Dingledine. Such a horrible, uh, situation, and I also wanna, uh, express my sorrow for the, the first responders having to deal with that, I know it wasn't a good day for them also. So it's just tragedy all around, so, uh, I just, I was wanting to do a moment of silence at the beginning, but since I, we didn't do that, but anyway, I just wanted to express it, it's really just a sad situation all around, so...
It is. Any other? With that, I would request...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.